Wednesday, October 30th, 2024. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of the meeting, seeing that there's no one here, I guess that's not an issue. And the new business item in front of us is a discussion impossible vote on One Austin Road Sewer Project staging area. And I just want to say that if for any reason there's a vote required by this board, I will abstain because I live in the area. So Amy, I'll hand it over to you.
Recuse, abstain.
Sorry, recuse. Thank you, Don.
Sure. So, thank you. So I looked into the zoning of this property on, it's called One Austin Road. And I'm just going to quickly run through the permits that they currently, that they have or that they've received. And it appears that it started in 2002, April 9th of 2002. They got a major site plan and a drinking water resource protection district special permit. And that was to construct the 9,900 square foot retail service, retail service stores, miscellaneous business and professional offices. That permit had two, two conditions that are, you know, of note. One was, they're both regulated by the Board of Health where, because they're in the water resource district, that they have to, their, the use and storage disposal of potentially hazardous and toxic materials shall not be in excess of residential uses. And the Board of Health will regulate any further commercial activity. So that kind of, it's their standard for water resource protection. And in 2005, they got a waiver of site plan review. And the waiver was to allow, they were subject to site plan review because of the addition of 17 parking spaces. They were allowed to waive that. In 2005, in November of 2005, they got a special, a use special permit. And that was for the subway, for takeout, restaurant takeout for subway. In 2006 is when they A and R'd the property. So that's the approval not required. And what they did was they took the, the triangle in the back and they added it to the property above them. So I don't know if you can see this, but the blue is what they, they created this, they added this lot to this lot with this tiny like dog leg, they call it. And that was approved by the planning board. And then in 2000, again, in 2006, they got another waiver from site plan review to allow for the reconfiguration of the parking lot and plantings, removal, relocation of a dumpster and to remove a detention basin. And also to create the connection to the, the other property. And then forward to, oh, so the other, the other permit, there was a permit for the property above them. That again was also in 2006, the same day, June 27th. That was a use special permit site plan. And that was for commercial building and parking. And that, it's connected to this because that permit specifically allowed them to connect to One Austin Road. And then in 2008, there was a use special permit and waiver of site plan. And that was for Dunkin' Donuts. And that is for both of the properties, the above and One Austin. It's recorded on both of them. And then in, fast forward to 2017. So nothing, I didn't find anything between 2008 and 2017. 2017, they got a notice of violation from the building commissioner that they were doing staging for National Grid. And they then, a month later, they received a special permit, a temporary use special permit for the storage of constructive, construction equipment. That use expired on, that permit specifically expired on May 31st of 2017. And so, so right now, there's just a couple of things I wanted to point out to the board is that the zoning bylaw in section 32545, it provides that the building official is hereby appointed and authorized to administer and enforce the provisions of this bylaw. So it's, the building commissioner makes determinations in the first instance as to what is allowed, what the use is, things like that. So it's not, it's not my job. It's the building commissioner. So, and, and again, when, even when the building commissioner sends me zoning determinations and asks my opinion, it's just my opinion. And I always remind him that he's the one, or she is the one that has to make that determination. Almost every zoning bylaw in the Commonwealth, it's usually the building official that is the first person to interpret the bylaw, interpret and enforce. So the next section of the bylaw that's pertinent here is definitions. And the definition is municipal use, which is a use whether in a structure and/or on a parcel of land owned and/or operated by the town of Harwich. I'm not sure, you, you might remember back up until 2020, there was a definition of essential services also in your bylaw. And that created a little bit of confusion between essential services and municipal use. And because of that confusion, a portion of the sewer project received a special permit under essential use because at the time, there was this thing called essential use. That has been deleted from your bylaw to create more cohesive bylaw. So now the only thing we have is municipal use. So again, whether the staging of equipment for the sewer project is a municipal use is, would be determined by the building commissioner. In my, you know, in my opinion, I think it, I think it most definitely would qualify. It's, it's a town project. The sewer project is a town project. They are essentially, the contractor is essentially working for the town. So it most likely would qualify as a municipal use. Again, that would be up to the building commissioner. And then if it is-
Can I interrupt just for a second? I'm just trying to figure out where your line commentary is going. Are you talking specifically about only this property or about that entire zone?
Well, it's for, a municipal use is allowed in every zone.
But I mean, on the flip side of that, would the same rules and regulations apply throughout the zone or is this site specific?
Nope. This is throughout CH2.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So municipal use is allowed in the CH2 zone. And so the next, the next provision is, is site plan approval. So site plan approval is required, the following development activity shall require a site plan special permit from the planning board. And there's a couple that I think that would, that the staging area would fall into. One of them is the establishment of any new commercial, industrial, multifamily, educational, municipal, fast food, takeout restaurant, or personal wireless service facility. And then the other one is any expansion of any exterior space. And then again, it lists the uses in municipal as one of the uses. And so from, from what I've received with regard to background on this is that, you know, there, possibly there was staging at another location that didn't need site plan. And then also that possibly the contractor was informed that they don't need any, any permits at all because they're a municipal use. So again, whether they need site plan or not would be determined by the building commissioner. But one of the things that I did want to point out is that the site plan provision, the site plan section has a waiver provision. They have received a waiver from site plan before in, in, I think it was twice in the past 20 something years, 26 years, no, 24 years. No, wait, I'm sorry, 22. I'm not good with math. In the past 22 years, they have received site, they have received waiver of site plan. The waiver of site plan is, it's done by the planning board. It's done at a meeting. It's not, there's no public hearing. It specifically states without a public hearing. So, you know, that is an option to, to move this project forward, you know, that the planning board will actually have a, you know, be aware that here's what we're, here's what's happening and determine whether they need site plan or not.
Don?
Couple of practical questions. That's why I asked the first question. If not here, or anyplace in the CH2 zone, I guess it is, the next zone over is residential. I mean, where would one presuppose that they'd be staging if a waiver wasn't granted? I mean, you're not going to deliver pipes for searing every single day from some remote location.
So they are an allowed use. And I think that the, the most they would have to do is go through site plan. Site plan cannot be denied. So it's really just the planning board saying, do you have appropriate screening? Do you have appropriate circulation? What are you doing? Are you having, is there going to be a dumpster there?
There again, that would be driven by past practice too. I mean, I can't imagine them imposing egregious conditions that haven't previously ever been imposed, not only just on that property, but on any property of staging in that area. And National Grid wasn't the only one who was staging out of that PT building. There was sewer staging, staging there too. So again, it's nice that it says that, that they should be shielded and all kinds of other things, but in practice, we haven't done that.
Right. Which is by most likely a waiver, most likely, I think they would probably, I mean, again, I can't speak for the planning board, but I would think that they would probably be granted the waiver.
And just for clarification, National Grid was on, not at the PT building. They were on Austin Road.
And National Grid received this, so when National Grid was staging in that, in this area at, at Austin Road, essential services was still, was still a use in your bylaw. And they were subject, they were required to get a special permit. And they got this thing called a temporary change of, change of use temporary special permit. It, it doesn't really exist. There is no temporary provision in your bylaw. But they received it and they did what they needed to do and it was fine. So they, they, they had to get a special permit for that because they were in, they were essential services. They were not a municipal use.
One last thing. There's a time for performance, because these things are all linked. You have contract. There's a time for performance commencement. I can't imagine the planning board is going to meet like on Friday to do this. So something has to be done about forbearing that.
I mean, again, that's just, that's what's in the zoning bylaw.
I just want to bring that up because it's, it's a public meeting. Something would have to be done because they're inextricably tied and one calls for something to happen that probably can't happen if the other thing has to happen first.
And again, this is all dependent upon what the building commissioner says. If the building commissioner says they're, they're a municipal use, they're allowed and they're not subject to site plan because they're temporary, that's the only thing I could think. But it's, there's nothing in here about temporary.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
We don't have a permanent, the one we just hired, building commissioner right now.
No, we have a building commissioner.
Not the one we appointed, we affirmed?
We, we have the building commissioner that we've had for the last three years.
Okay.
It's not the individual whose candidacy did not go forward. We have a building commissioner. It's the same building commissioner that we relied upon for the CVO for another municipal project. We have a backup building commissioner. So we've, we've never been bereft of building commissioner.
That's why I'm confused. Because nowhere in the chain of the letters that went out or the discussions or orders given, was there any discussion about the building commissioner being involved in that transaction at all? If you're saying that the other one is still here. He's not opined on anything in writing.
Correct. I don't think anyone has said that he has.
No, but I'm just saying that this was, anything that we're discussing right now wasn't as a result of the building commissioner saying, no, you can't do this. He wasn't, he wasn't part of this discussion. Correct?
Correct. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Just on that piece along, is there a reason we didn't ask the building commissioner to opine or is this essentially information we're receiving tonight news to us that they have the authority to make a decision or at least provide a response? So in other words, I believe Amy said that the building commissioner could bless this thing theoretically because they, that's within their, within the statute, it's within their authority. Did, were we aware of that or we weren't aware of that, which is why we didn't ask the existing building commissioner to opine?
For me, it's not whether we were aware or not. The way I've been taking this is since the introduction of the questions around that site, it was my understanding that this was coming before the board for discussion. So we were deferring to council to do their research and come to this meeting.
Okay.
If I may. It was my understanding that Amy, thank you for being here, that you got a call last week and opined on this already, that, that it was a usable lot. That was my conversation with, with Joe, that you had done your due diligence and spoke to, I believe you said, and that this lot was usable. Is that not true?
I don't believe I referred to an opinion. I believe I referred to the fact that council was, as council said to me along the lines of reviewing the last opinion on municipal use and was going to be reviewing that in light of present day facts.
Okay. So I pointed out that, that we got rid of essential services. So most likely because this is the sewer project, it most likely would be a municipal use and allowed.
Okay. And then, and then, you know, fast forward to, I'll just find the email. I went to the building department. This is from Abby Rose Power, who I will call the project leader for the contractor. Dated October 24th, I went to the building department yesterday and they said no permit needed for Austin Road stage area. She also verified it with planning department. You're good to proceed use by building and planning. So why is our staff, why, I'm totally confused as to why we're even here, to be totally honest with you. And hopefully we can wrap this up in the next 10 minutes. But they did their duty, they went to the town, the town told them. Did they have to do anything else?
So, you know, I, I don't, I'm not sure if staff, it got dark. I'm not sure if staff looked at site plan. I, I don't know if they just looked at the fact that this, that they determined this was a municipal use and therefore you go to the use chart and it says yes. And that-
They did say that. They said they looked at the chart and they said, you're allowed to do this by right. I'm confused why you're here.
And so, so, you know, I just think they might've overlooked the site plan section that requires site plan for, you know, any new or any new use or the expansion, you know, of the, of the property, the use, expansion of the use on the property. And, you know, municipalities cannot be, they're not stopped by, by prior decisions. Meaning if, if a stat, if a prior building commissioner says that you do not need site plan, a new building commissioner comes in and they, they look at the zoning bylaw and say, no, you need site plan. They are not, they, they don't have to rely on that prior. You can't, or an applicant cannot rely on that prior decision. It's just, it's, there's a bunch of case law on this that, you know, municipal officials cannot stop anybody from claiming that they don't have to comply with, with zoning.
I, for one, am completely embarrassed that a contractor for a $40 million project came into town hall, walked out with a, with a, because there's numbers involved in this. Great savings to the town of Harwich if they choose that lot. And I certainly don't think it's this board that should be sitting here tonight determining this anyway. The process should have been the process as, as you laid it out. We shouldn't be involved at all. With that, I'd like to move that we support the use of One Austin Road for sewer project staging area.
Second.
And then my only discussion, if I may, Madam Chair, is I'm not suggesting that they use it. And I want to be on the record. It's not up to us to determine whether staging area is. So if they can make a deal with somebody else and save the town and themselves money, then they should do that. But if this is the spot that is saving the town money, then I support it. And, and, but I want to, definitely on the record that I'm not asking the contractor to use this lot. But if they're permitted to use this lot and it's saving the town money, then I whole heartedly support it.
Don?
I'm sure that if we're confused, the public watching this is equally confused. So just as a matter of record, because I understand what you're saying and I understand the process. I served on the planning board myself and I get it. What I don't get is how we got to here. Because those are immutable attributes, like building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer and all that kind of good stuff. But as per the record, a single member of the board tells the town administrator to have them step, stand down and look at another property in the same exact zone without our involvement. And that is troubling right there, which is kind of why I'm supporting the permit. Because the process, if anybody was a citizen and they thought that this was an egregious violation of something, the remedy is go to the building commissioner. Say, I found something that's going on. Can you look into this? It's just a matter of me being a taxpayer here. So it should, it should not have gone around the process. And that's kind of why I was asking whether, you know, what the process would be and whether each property would be equally encumbered by the same zoning restrictions. It's the same for everybody.
It is.
And you can't instruct somebody to look at it someplace else. At the same time as you're telling them they can't get this, if the building commissioner is not involved in the, both properties are equally in the same zone. It's confusing.
So for the record, and I shared the information with this board, that I was aware of a violation. And to Amy's point, that there was a special permit that had to be granted, they had to go through a process. I brought that to the town administrator. He understood. He then, then we said that we needed to vet it. So none of this was out of the process in the sense that if something, if there's a change of use, which Amy just said, there's a process that it must go through. And the zoning, the zoning bylaws are for us to adhere to as well. So we can't tell the public that we're not going to go through the process that they have to go through so that we're all on the same page. There are zoning bylaws and we all have to adhere to them, including the town. That's how it came about. That's how it ended up with Amy. That's why we're here. So I don't know why there's confusion in the sense that there are zoning bylaws that we all have to adhere to.
Because there was a letter that got sent to the contractor instructing him to do something. That's why.
No. And so for clarification, in terms of, when you're saying the other property, I assume you mean the old PT place, which is what they used previously, which apparently fell under essential use.
But where would we come off recommending an alternative site in any event where we are not involved in that way?
I believe they were-
Especially if you're an abutter to it.
Okay. So listen, I'm going to stick to what we exactly came here to talk about, which is the zoning bylaw. And I specifically told you that I'm not voting on anything. The point is it's a zoning bylaw of the town of Harwich and it applies to everybody. Has nothing to do with me as an abutter. I didn't write the zoning bylaws. So I'm just clarifying. You asked a question. I'm clarifying from my point and that's all I'm going to say.
I didn't ask a question. I'm saying that there was a course of action that was instructed to be taken. There was a letter that was sent to the contractor and none of us on this board knew that any of this was happening. None of us. And neither did the building commissioner. These are facts.
What, what is the letter?
Email.
Okay. So the question was asked because of past practice. That's why it was asked. No, no other reason and no instruction, just the question of why that wasn't being pursued. That's it.
There was an instruction in that email. There was, it was not a question.
Anyway, Pete?
I'm going to go on the, I think the same path Michael was going to, which is the confusion. So I understand what you just laid out as far as an observation of, of an infraction, I'll call it. But it certainly doesn't belong in front of us. We are not the authority to opine of, to whether or not they have the authority to do business on that piece of property based on the way it's owned. So this should have gone to the building commissioner from the beginning, if that is the individual in town that has the authority to thumb up or thumbs down this process. And then I assume the contractor has the right to pursue the planning board if the commissioner says it doesn't work.
Right. If he says that site plan is, is required, then they can go to the planning board and ask for the waiver.
Right.
They could also take his determination, the building commissioner's determination. They could appeal it to the zoning board of appeals. But in this situation, I don't, it wouldn't be worth it, in my opinion.
Sure.
They do have, they do have options.
Right. So there's a process that never involves the select board, is my point.
Agreed. And, and actually that, I believe that you all requested this meeting. We, in terms of Amy, I'm the liaison to zoning board of appeals and to planning. So I reached out on that only because of a violation and a different use. That's how it came to Amy and this board wanted a meeting.
And what I'll interject, and because I don't, I agree to a degree. I wanted this cleaned up quickly because of the timing involved. I didn't understand the process. It, in the end, it does not belong in front of this board. 10 days ago, two weeks ago, whenever this was first discovered, the building commissioner should have been brought in at that point in time and rendered his decision or their decision. And then the contractor has the paths to choose if the decision by the commissioner is not what they wanted. So that's where this process failed. So whomever is responsible, I do not know, but that's a failure. This needs to get to the building commissioner for their, for that individual's approval or denial, then the contractor needs to move forward. Michael, if I could, through you, Madam Chair, is your, is your motion to offer our support to either the building commissioner, the support for use of this property to the building commissioner or to the zoning or, or planning board? Is that what the motion is?
In general, support. And everybody should know, building commissioner, planning, whomever, that this board supports it.
Okay.
And then if I, if I may-
I just had a question on the motion. The way I heard it was support the use of One Austin Road. And I believe, was there the reference for construction staging material?
Yes.
For the sewer project?
For the sewer.
Yeah. And I seconded it. That's how I understood the motion.
Which, which honestly, I really don't want to cause another wrinkle in all of this, but I, I think that motion is 100% appropriate because it is a town project. So you, you know, you are the CEOs of the town, you, you know, and you're supporting a town project. So I don't think, I think it's an appropriate motion.
You want to add that to the first part of the motion? As a municipal project, comma, the board supports the issues, a waiver?
Sure.
Yes. And that's ultimately how it was explained to me when I spoke to Joe and whomever you had spoken to, planning and done your due diligence, starting with the fire station that you said that the town, because it's a town project-
Right.
-should support. So us, we should support it. I just want to get back to, to, to one thing and then I want to move on and not look back again. But I really hope we can be better. So in an email, and really going back and forth about this with a contractor and even being in the middle of it, I would have to agree with Don. But an email sent by Joe Powers, October 24th. Good morning, Craig. Craig being the representative from RBO. The use of Austin Road remains a town decision. Nothing from Abby's conversation with staff yesterday changes the directive that I issued last week via the select board chair. And to Pete's point, we shouldn't be involved. We should be know, any board member should not be issuing, and we just dealt with this on Hall's path. Don and I didn't issue the order to put the gate up. It came back to the whole board. Julie, I respect that you size zoning. You do that a lot more than I do because that's your life. But it should have been reported to the building department. We should have been out of it. There was a lot of emails firing back and forth and feelings and who's an abutter and who's not an abutter and should they do this or should they not do this? And I felt like it really got into a conversation that didn't need to happen. But orders shouldn't be being given by anybody besides a regulatory board.
I don't want to go back and forth either, but I will say for myself, orders aren't given. I provided information, knowledge I had on an issue. And I would say that in the past, this board has had similar conversations about somebody knowing something about something that the rest of us didn't know. knowing something about something that the rest of us didn't know. I passed along the information to the town administrator. So that's all I can say.
May I just ask, if I'm not mistaken, Joe, you are the man, you're the person in charge that we've charged with the management of the CWMP, is that correct?
No.
I'm sorry. You're the person that we've charged with the overall management of?
The project.
The project.
Right.
That's what I meant, right. So I'm, I'm just wanting to understand better the procedure of, would it go to the building commissioner first or would it go to the person that we put, charged with overseeing the project?
Are you asking me that question?
I'm asking somebody that question. And I'll listen, maybe Amy would be the, maybe not, maybe it would be Joe. I'd like an answer though.
I, in, in an attempt to try to answer, we're, we're starting at a point in time, well, let me be factual based on the information. We're starting at a point in time of late morning, October 17th, 2024, the email in question. What's not been brought to this discussion today and it may help me answer earlier questions from board members. There was an earlier email that the town received, me as the town, as GHD received it as the town's engineer for this construction project, that was submitted by the contractor, whereby the contractor identified a potential site for sewer construction material. The contract that we're presently operating under for phase three requires the contractor to identify a suitable site for engineer trailer and construction staging material. Now that differs slightly from phase two, where the phase two contract only referred to trailers. But we understood that to be the location at the old rehab whereby the engineer trailer was the old office and the storage area was directly behind it. So my email was both in response to the contractor saying, we have a lease for a potential site, let us know what you think, as well as the main information I received the morning on October 17th. So for my purposes, yes, the discussion is proper. The contractor, working within the requirements of the contract, identified to the town agent and to the engineer, one of the two sites to be located. So that's where the discussion came for sewer construction. The cease and desist order that I issued was, as I understood my role as your agent for the town, was to a vendor under contract for the town. Because there was information that I received that needed to be investigated. So that's where the cease and desist came from. I did not have it in my mind then, nor had I, had I had it in my mind for quite some time, that the lease that they presented would need to be vetted and would need to go to the building commissioner. So there is, the reality is, the parties have been talking, as we do at our regular construction meetings, for engineer trailer sites. No one has objected, nor did I seek permission, for the use of the old fire station two, which is now select board property. That's where the trailers are being located. Contractor continues to do great work on communication, et cetera. They've informed us, the engineer and the town, that those trailers should be powered and available for use November 1st. So there were the two discussions going on. So the cease and desist was, as I understood, the town's responsibility for managing a contract and a vendor. It was not because I believe I or anyone else had the power to act as building commissioner, none of that was present on October 17th. So I hope that answers your question generally, or at least gives more information for the board generally.
Thank you, Joe.
Don?
Just to distill that, no one in this room has the authority to opine on the zoning bylaws and interpret them. No project manager, because I think that's kind of what Jeff was asking, no project manager can actually act for, for a stop work action relative to zoning, they don't have that authority. The building commissioner does. So my final question is, when did the building commissioner get, get this referred to them for a ruling?
May I first ask if I've answered the question as the prior speaker asked it?
Yes.
Because it, okay, because it sounded like, I'm not operating under the zoning bylaws.
I just wanted to clarify.
Pretended to act.
I agree, and that's why I was trying to clarify.
And I have not had conversation with the building commissioner. Because this matter has been discussed at the legal level and the select board level for over a week and it's my expectation, as odious as I think we all find this exercise this afternoon, if nothing else, we're going to come away with clarity. The mess, the, the motion to me is extremely helpful and clear. And based on that, I will continue to work with staff, including the building commissioner, for the next steps on this.
But that's why I asked this. Amy initially even came around and said it, even she doesn't have the authority to be able to interpret our zoning bylaw for compliance. So nobody in this room has that authority. That's why I'm asking, when the building commissioner got involved, so everything we have done to this point is absent the actual person who can interpret the zoning bylaw, right up until the time we're sitting here.
So the question went to Amy when, when this got elevated. So that's where we're at with the.
That's not what I'm asking. There is no interpretation by anybody in the position to have authority to do that.
So I'm, you did not let me finish. What I was saying is, we were waiting for Amy's feedback, which we just got this evening. So if that's not valid enough, I don't know what else to, to say to you to end the conversation, but that's why we're here tonight.
I cannot believe we're waiting on any stop work action for, for legal opinion because that would be frightening, that every particular position that the zoning officer wanted to take, we'd have to start with our lawyer first. That's not what we do.
So I would just say that in, in deference to what you just said, I would say that actually if there was a situation that developed because we didn't vet something properly and then had the contractor go to all of the work of staging somewhere only to be told that they couldn't do that and then they would have to relocate, I think that's a more of a hardship on the contractor. So that's why it was important to vet the information with legal, which is, again, this board asked for a meeting. We could have had Amy's opinion in an email or whatever other way to, you know, to distribute it, but we're having a meeting because the board requested a meeting. And we were going to have the meeting, as you know, on Monday and we moved it up and Amy accommodated us this evening. Just for the record, just so the public understands.
Are there any other, sorry?
The only thing I'd like to say is I'm thrilled that this board feels, I believe, that the site is appropriate and we will support that site to be used. We have a motion in a second.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Pete? I didn't call in you, Pete, that was, I was just pointing and saying, Pete, trying to talk.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Make sure.
I just want for the record, to, for it to be understood that my employer isn't an abutter to the Austin Road property. I stand nothing to gain, nor does my employer stand anything to gain from this recommendation from the board, so therefore I will not recuse myself. I will vote on this matter.
So we're going to call the vote now. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero and I'm recused.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?